First of all, I didn't get to say this is a little bit disconcerting to stand up here, but I am going to be putting about 70, 80, 90 feet. The thing is that right on that side, that is the driveway, we're in, I don't have a garage. It's, we fixed it up in the back just to store furniture and stuff because I had everything in pots. And there's no access because there's a huge tree there, which is beautiful, we trimmed it, and then there's the pool room. So that, whether the property was entered when it was old and original, coming in from the other side of the street, I don't know. It was the first house in the whole acreage all around here. So I just parked the car out in front. I don't need to put it in the garage anyway. So I've got all that, I'm okay with that. But that is where the, you know, where you would have gone. And it's also, she has, a neighbor on that east side has a lot of trees. She doesn't know a lot about landscaping, and they're just tree, 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 tree. So for me to put a bunch of trees on that fence, it wouldn't be logical to be growing right in. But I've got one by the shed, which is right under her window, and that would be a big one. And then I would put one, you know, where they're...
Well, I think, I think you can give your explanation to the staff.
But the other thing I was gonna say is I usually just look at the landscape and do the pass, do the thing. I don't draw it up, but if Kevin would help me draw it, or Laverick can help me, thank you.
We'll meet outside.
Thank you, and that would be great, because I just have it in my head the way I see it.
Right. But I think we would want a landscape plan.
Oh, yes, I'm glad that you're out. Yes, I know my eyes are there. Can help me do that.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
This brings up the question driveway access, which should be shown on the plan as well.
Well, there's no requirement in Assam to have a garage.
Oh, is it there? No on-site parking requirement.
No, so I, I don't know that we can require...
I just wondered if there...
Yeah. I understand. Good question. And we found out that she doesn't require them to have it.
So that won't interfere with the plan?
Yeah. There's a motion on the floor. Could I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Your application is approved. Anyone in the audience that's been named is to appeal to the council. Would we ask Mr. Quinlan to take that?
Yeah. I figured we, you know, every extra person helps.
All right. Avenue.
The next item before you is a request for special structures permit for three things: a sidewalk height exception for the main house, a basement greater than the footprint of the main residence, and a reduced front yard setback for the accessory structure at 70 Alena Avenue. The applicants are requesting an increase of one foot to the maximum sidewalk height to the main residence. The code has a maximum allowable of 22 feet, and they are proposing a maximum sidewalk height of 23 feet. As required by the code, the house is able to meet an increased setback requirement of five feet for a total of front and rear setbacks of 60, sorry, 65 feet and a side setback of 55 feet. The overall height of the home will be less than the required 30-foot maximum. The second entitlement that applicants are requesting is a special structures permit for a basement larger than the footprint of the home. The code does allow for the issuance of a permit if the applicants are squaring off the basement, which they are proposing to do. Their basement would be 5.5 percent greater than the footprint of the home, whereas 30 percent is allowed. And they, only 5 percent of the basement would be outside of the footprint, whereas 25 percent is allowed by the code upon your approval. All aspects of the basement, including the light wells and the southern gardens, will be within the main building area of the law. Their final entitlement, they're requesting is to locate a detached garage closer to the front property line than is allowed by the code. As this is a flag lot, the applicants are requesting a special structure permit to allow the garage to be 16 feet behind the front wall of the house rather than the 30 feet normally required. They are requesting this to allow the pool equipment to be located further away from the neighboring property and to reduce the paving on site by providing a shortened driveway. There are no heritage tree removals proposed as part of this application, and I'm not sure if you remember, there was a concern from a neighbor on a previous application that they brought forward for their lot line redesignation. They have spoken with all the neighbors, and this neighbor in particular has no concerns, and staff has not received any concerns. Staff is supportive of all three proposals for the reasons outlined in the staff report. I'm available to answer questions. The applicant is also going to do a presentation as well. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, staff? Apparently none, thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Thanks, Andrew. Commissioners, did you, my name is Dan Wilson, we're the Full City of Architects, and I'm the project architect for the owners of 70 Alena. Frankly, I was stressing out about going through all three of these items, but having reviewed the staff report and listening to Andrew's presentation, she goes through each of the items fairly concisely, so I'll be as brief as I possibly can and just highlight a few of the items that were, well, all three of the items that were asking the application with some supplemental drawings that I brought today, if that's okay for you guys. So the first one that I'll talk about briefly is the reduction in the front yard setback. And so what you'll see here, this kind of pink line, if you can see the highlighting, that's the existing front yard setback for accessory structures. And so what we're proposing to do is move it in line with the existing front yard setback for the main residence, which is allowable for a flag lot, which is what we're talking about today. That allows us to move the garage from kind of a tighter corner location, as you can see on the first sheet of your drawings. It allows us to move it about halfway into the setback that we're proposing, and that makes it about equidistant from the two adjoining properties, the residents on those properties. So one to the south, you can see here, and the other residence, you can kind of see a corner of it here. So that addresses the location of the garage, and what I've indicated here with a little bit of hatch mark is the position that's into the setback. So the second issue that I can speak to to this plan is the additional basement area that we're asking for. And that's this little area right here that I've identified with also some red marker, and that's the increase in the size of the basement that is outside of the footprint of the main floor above. And those are the percentages that Andrea was presenting to you guys. I think she said it was about 5 percent increase in the overall footprint of the basement. And also note that that's within the setback for the main building as well. And then the third, the third issue here, it's included in your, the drawings that we submitted, but I highlighted a little bit just for clarity. The kind of the pink line on both drawings indicates the allowable buildable envelope for the, maximum buildable envelope for the house. And what we're attempting to illustrate here is that the home that we're designing is well within or smaller than the maximum allowable size and bulk of the project that the code allows. And what we're asking for, by increasing the five-foot setbacks on all four sides of the property by the required five feet, we're asking for a one-foot increase, which is this line across both elevations, a one-foot increase in the side line. And I kind of liken that to, I'm over six feet tall, and if you think of this as a belt line, I'm kind of pulling the belt line up to my belly button, but I'm not increasing my height at all. So it's basically, basically a proportional issue. And we're well with, we're well below the 30-foot height requirement for the project. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Do you have any? Apparently there are no questions.
Yeah, did I do? First question, why do you want to move the garage? What's wrong with the list where you started off with?
Well, I think what we're doing by moving the garage kind of in a more central location is we're able to reduce the amount of driveway to get to the garage in the lower corner of the property. And it allows us to, to move it further away from that southern neighbor to the south, which allows us to get the pool equipment, some other things, further away from, from that property. And it also allows us to increase the side yard setback by rotating 90 degrees to about 28 feet, which is an increase from the required 10 feet.
Is the pool equipment in the, in the end of the garage or in some portion of the garage?
It's currently planned for in some portion of the garage, correct.
So the, I guess the change room stays where it is?
Change room stays where it's at, correct.
Okay, that's the first question on that one. And then on the basement issue, one you were involved in obviously with what happened, but the reason that the builders were squaring off the basement sometimes have different shapes, rectangular, they have some bends in them. And the idea was that if the homeowner wanted to square off, give an angle, he could do that, that homeowner could do that by quote-quote "squaring off" the basement. To me, this isn't squaring off the basement, this is a flat addition to the basement outside. The basement was square before, underneath the house, this is just extra square footage in the basement, not squared off, not, in my view. Comment?
I don't have a comment, I guess you're entitled to your opinion of how the project should be squared off.
Are there any other questions?
Although I would add that we do, we do have a projection that, I mean, you can see in the plan, there's a projection to the south that follows the main floor footprint, and that's, that's the corner that we're squaring off to.
Are there any comments? If I remember the public? If not, I'll close the public commentary and ask commissioners for their opinions in possible light. Well, you got to rest on the last one. Give us your thought.
I certainly will. Okay, so do you want to take things one at a time, or do you want me to do it?
I, I think we should discuss them, but I, the motions should be one that, there'll be three, three motions.
Okay, so you want me to discuss all three?
I think we can retain what you have to say. If, if...
Simple question.
Simple, all three?
I want your, all three.
Okay. So...
How are you gonna do that, Paul? One at a time or three?
I will do each in succession. So in terms of the first, the first one, which is, which is the excessive height, the code basically provides, in my view, an avenue for buying additional height, and that is by giving up side yard. And so, you know, particularly if the neighbors aren't complaining and no one is raising issues about why there's some good reason why we shouldn't follow, so the analysis that's in the code, I think that that's what our, where our code allows. It's a, you know, a cost of this to buy this. And so on the excessive height, I would support giving excessive height because they're paying the price. On the basement, I actually agree with...
You want a motion on that one?
No, I think, I was, I was instructed by the chairman to give my views on all three.
And then we'll come back and we'll take a motion separately. If we have to go back to the commissioners for comments for each motion, we'll do it. We are now looking at the whole...
One at a time, okay. So then, in terms of the basement, I agree with Phil that the, that the intent of the provision was to deal with, you know, non-standard shapes and with squaring off. And with the interpretation that this is squaring off, it would mean that you could run a one-foot projection out as far as you wanted and then grab all of the land that you just pushed out. And I don't think that was, that was the intent. So the fact that there is a projection from the house, I don't think that then allows you to grab all the basement space around that whole side to the extent of the, of the extension. So I don't think this is squaring off the basement, so I would not support the basement extension. And then in terms of the garage, I'm not sure what I think about that. I mean, it's a flag lot, I understand putting things equidistant, there's no trees coming out, so it may be sort of no harm, no foul. I prefer to, to follow the setbacks that are in the code because presumably there's a, there's a, a need for them, but it becomes attenuated when it's a flag lot because a lot of the reasons for a lot of these building standards are not, don't directly map back to flag lots, so I'm subject to changing my mind based on the commentary of my fellow commissioners. I would probably support detached garage where they proposed it.
Thank you. Mayor Jeff?
Well, I, I have no problem with the height proposal, or really with the garage. I think that, that our laws provide for, for that request. The basement, I spent quite a bit of time looking at that. There is that little piece that juts out that is, is supposed to make it suitable for squaring off, only it doesn't go all the way to the edge of the property and, or the edge of the building. And so that kind of, that, all that kind of, kind of played against each other, and so I guess I'm really not in favor of the basement for the reason, for the square-off I think that the, you know, the, certainly where our laws provide for a basement that's 130 percent of the house footprint, and maybe it needs to be redirected in some way. But I, I can't justify it as being squared off.
Phil?
I would approve, I visited the property on Monday morning, gate was open, so I went in, so I've seen the property again. I would support the excessive height permit and the change for the reduced front yard setback for the garage, and I would decline the request for the basement.
Well, I find myself in agreement with you and the other commissioners. I think the little protrusion on the, that allows the basement to come out, it's not the intent of why we allowed the, or the revision that allowed 130 percent. And obviously, the height is in keeping with the ordinance, and I believe we have a better plan for our use of the old land by replacement of the garage as the applicant wishes. So may we have a motion on each one of these, one by one?
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the planning commission prouled the request for excessive height permit at 70 Alena with the appropriate increase in setbacks.
The applicant would like to redirect you if you're open to that.
For the height? No, no.
For the basement.
If I may, yeah, on the... Well, we haven't had, had much of, I'll call on you when...
Okay. I just didn't know if I had enough time to dialogue.
Sure, I understand.
Seconding your motion.
I second it. Two seconds.
She already did, so I'm sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, to nothing, in passage? May we have a second motion?
Okay, I'll move that the Assam Planning Commission accepts the request for a, a permit to allow detached garage with reduced front yard setback at 70 Alena Avenue.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, four, nothing. Now may we have the third motion?
Did you want to?
Well, I'll get the motion on the floor.
Okay.
And then as part of the discussion...
I move that the town of Assam Planning Commission deny the request for a permit for a basement under the main residence at 70 Alena to allow an additional squaring off of the proposed basement.
Second. But you would approve any basement under...
The basement under the main residence does not require planning commission action.
Okay.
It's just that shaded area that we're speaking to.
Yeah. All right. Okay. May we have a motion in a second? Would you like to comment on...
Yeah, thank, thank you for your deliberations. I think I have kind of an uphill battle on the basement, but I think I would try and sway you potentially in that I'm not sure, I made it clear that it was not visible at all from the exterior of the property. Also wanted to note that I don't believe there's detrimental to the public health, peace, safety, comfort, general welfare, convenience of the general plan of the town to locate that where we've located it. And had I known that there was a requirement in the town code for what defines a, an offset or an irregular shape, then I certainly would have proposed a solution and complied with that. But I, I don't know where we draw the line between what an acceptable offset is or an irregular shape is, if four feet is enough, or eight feet is enough, or I don't think the code provides a provision or guidance for, for what defines that particularly. So I believe that our submission complies with the general intent of the town's general plan in that it squares off a portion of the home that has a reentrant corner and also complies with the other specifications and the zoning requirements. So I would request that you do an 11th hour reconsideration of your determination based on my persuasive arguments.
Any questions, by the commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, both commissioners? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Deny.
Yes, is denying the...
Additional basement area.
Yes. I, all those, yes, there's none. So the motion passes for nothing, I'm sorry. You have 10 days to apply for reconsideration to the city council, or anyone else. My fellow commissioner. Thank you very much, thank you. We'll move on then to the last item on the agenda. It's 94 Selby.
The last item before you is a request for a variance to allow a tennis court to be built closer than is allowed to the front property line at 94 Selby. The applicant is asking to construct a tennis court 30 feet from the front property line. They are asking for this variance to avoid removal at a heritage, excuse me, they're asking for the variance to avoid removal of a heritage tree located towards the area of the lot. The owner will be doing a presentation as well and discussing their process for determining this location based on, based on their design process. We are not supportive of the application for a variance because we do not believe that the proposal meets the required findings as required by the code, namely, we do not feel that the size, shape, and topography is unique to the lot, and we believe that granting the variance would constitute the granting of a special privilege. However, the applicant is also requesting, if you, if, sorry, if you decide to deny the variance, the applicant is requesting consideration of a special structure permit which would allow the tennis court to be built at the front setback of the house. The code allows athletic courts to be located at the front setback line upon issuance and approval of a special structure permit. However, placing the court in this location will also require the removal of one co-sly oak heritage tree, and for that reason, the applicant is also requesting a permit for that, again, if you deny the variance. The town arborist did conduct a site inspection and noted that the tree had good vigor but is in poor, poor to fair condition. There are 18 other oaks on the property. And the applicant is requesting, as I mentioned, consideration of the variance first, that is their first choice, before the special structure permit and heritage tree removal certificate. We are supportive of the special structure permit and heritage removal permit and believe the findings can be met for those two permits as outlined in the staff report. As I mentioned, the applicant, and I believe the architect is here to make a presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions by commissioners?
Thank you.
You have colored copies of this in your pack, but yours were actually black and white, so it's a little easier if you want your color. Do you have colored copies? I'm sure it's...
Hi, Tech.
It's a little white. Very important. All right, thank you, and hello to the commissioners. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present our plans before you. My name's Tim Anderson, and I'm the owner of the lot along with my wife, Mitzi Marvel, here in the audience. We have our two daughters with us as well, Georgia, age 12, and Penelope, age 9, a tennis school locally, and a middle school in Phillips Brooks. My daughters and I are active tennis players. My daughters play competitively, I only wish I could play competitively. What we'll be discussing with you today is the placement of a tennis court on our property. We've lived in Woodside for about the last five years until recently. We've wanted to move for a number of years for two reasons. First, we wanted to be closer to our daughters' schools. Second, we wanted to be able to build a tennis court on our property. We've looked for many years for a larger lot that would allow us to accomplish both of these goals, and in late 2011, we finally found a lot that we felt fit our needs. It's a 1.5 acre flag lot parcel in 94 Selby, it's one of those Selby Lane cul-de-sacs.
It's one of those Selby Lane cul-de-sacs. The layout of the parcel is shown on the diagram here in the ones before you. And when we bought the lot, we initially believed that we could build a tennis court at the back end of the parcel, but unfortunately, we were mistaken. Both the town arborist and our private arborist said that in this location, any court would be too close to two very large, old, mature heritage oaks, I've written out here. And they felt that this could jeopardize the health of these oaks, and that's certainly not something that we wanted to do. So, we began to explore every other option about putting a court on this property. In the end, because of the configuration of the lot and because of the location of other trees, we essentially only had two locations that will work, and we'll be presenting both of those options to you today. Our preferred option, as Andrea mentioned, is for the commission to grant us a variance that allows placement of the tennis court thirty feet back from the front fence. In this location, it would be tucked behind our front neighbor's pool house, which is here, and it would be alongside our southerly neighbor's existing tennis court, which is located here. It would be largely hidden from the view of these neighbors, it would not be obtrusive. The town planners seem to concur with those further comments in the documents that you have before you. We discussed the placement of the court with our front neighbor, who's written that he would support this location, and that should be included in your packet. We tried, but were unable to reach the neighbor in the southerly location. We rang their doorbell, we called, and left a message, but it didn't hear back. We understand that for a variance to be granted, four findings generally need to be met. The town planners, Lisa and Andrea, have said they cannot support the variance because of the first two necessary findings related to special circumstances and special privileges. They take no issue with the third and fourth findings, and accordingly, what I'll be talking about is only the first two findings issued. In terms of whether there are special circumstances with our parcel, our lot indeed has several unique attributes related to its size, shape, and configuration that should be considered, and we discussed some of these with Lisa and Andrea. First, our lot is not just a routine flag lot, it also has close similarities to more of a wedge-shaped lot where you enter into the corner. And this raises questions about what should really be considered the front setback zone. As you can see on the diagram, our lot is pretty similar to the lot that's in front of us here, where we just had a house that was recently completed, and the garage attached to this house that sits here that actually approaches in what you would normally think of as the front setback zone. And we verified that in the city tonight. In wedge-shaped lots like this, where you enter from the corner, our understanding is that certain calculations can be made that potentially allow structures to be built in front of what would seem to be the front setback line, like our neighbors just did with their new garage. If we assume that our entrance is similar to this, comes in from a corner, that our setback would presumably be more of something like an arc like theirs is, and that would mean that our tennis court is not necessarily infringing on this front setback zone, or at least it infringes less than thirty feet. But is it potentially appropriate for us to even consider this argument? One thing that supports that this is a unique location is this location of a road here. It's a public access road, it runs the full length of our extended driveways, you can see in the diagram. And routine flag lots would not normally have this feature, so this makes our lot unique. When we first purchased this lot, we in fact considered relocating the entrance of our lot from here to this side over here. And we discussed this preliminarily with the town, and they seemed to say that this would be possible. They wanted us to check with the fire department. We did check with the fire department, and the fire department said that they felt it would be acceptable. At present, we're not currently planning to change that location, but the very fact that we could change it shows how this property is uniquely configured, how it's not a normal flag lot, where coming up to the second or alternate location would not be possible. Another unique attribute of our lot that we want to talk about is this portion of the lot here, this kind of wedge-shaped or funnel-shaped portion. As stated in the town documents related to setback measurements, the intent of a setback, as we understand it, is to ensure that you have open areas around primary structures for reasons of safety, aesthetics, and privacy. We have plenty of that because of the shape of our lot, specifically that funnel-shaped portion at the entrance. This creates a natural setback that's greater than what you would get with a normal, traditional square-shaped flag lot where a driveway comes in perpendicular or with a street-facing lot. And this funnel-shaped area alone measures 2,500 square feet. Under our current architect plans, as we've shown here, the vast majority of the body of our house is located well at any sort of sixty-foot setback line, as you can see over here. It's an L-shaped configuration, and we, we and our architect felt that it's the most aesthetic as you enter the lot. Even with a tennis court pushed forward, we clearly have a substantial front setback zone that we seem to accomplish what setback zones are designed to do. For a square, one-acre Atherton lot, the front setback would normally be around 12,500 square feet. And we calculate that on our property, our front setback under the current plans is around 20,000 square feet, so almost twice as much. Additionally, even moving the tennis court up for thirty feet like we're asking to do, you'd still be well away from any sort of public access. So, from the corner of this court to public access would be well over 200 feet. If you contrast that to what a normal lot would be asking for, if they wanted to move their court up thirty feet, they would essentially be thirty feet from public access, and then start to approach on a public space. Our plan obviously wouldn't do that. There's something else unique to this lot that most lots in Atherton don't have to contemplate, and that's the fact that our lot butts ready with city on the back end side. And what's behind us here is mostly R2 zoning, meaning it's a series of duplexes. And as such, we calculate and kind of walk that area, that in one-acre parcel of R2 zoning, you'll have over twenty dwelling units. If you contrast that to an acre or parcel in Atherton, you would typically only have one dwelling unit. And the effect of this is that for us to enjoy the privacy area of our lot like others can, we'll need to do some substantial screening to separate us from the noise that comes from that higher density living, and that naturally pushes everything we want to do towards the front of our lot. On the back end here, if you walk the property, you may have noticed, we have a two-story duplex residence that's literally five feet from our back fence. Over here, we have another two-story residence that's about twenty feet back. And in the far corner here, we have a basketball court, a public basketball court, a big parking space, so it kind of doubles as a parking lot as well. That would have been a great space in the back here.